All right, before we get started and I call the meeting to order, please take a look at your video so I don't have to read these out loud. This gives you some of the instructions on how we can run a very smooth meeting. Once the meeting is started, we will remove that and we will post the agenda. Ms. Odom, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Ms. Odom, you can remove that video and put our agenda now. Call the order of the city council meeting of Dan Allen, December 13th, 2021. It is now 5:31. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Tom, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Let's pray. Father God, there is a lot of things that happen in this world in which we don't understand. But for those things in which we do, we thank you, Lord. Before I pray for this meeting, Lord, I want to pray for all those folks who were impacted by the tornado over the weekend, Lord. Father, in Jesus' name, I pray for an abundance of your provision for those who were hit, Lord. I pray for healing for those who are hurt. And for the dead, Lord, I pray you lead and guide those survivors, lead and guide those rescuers. And I pray for more survivors, Lord. I pray for warm weather, and I thank you for your grace and mercy. And as far as this meeting, Lord, I thank you. I thank you for everyone here tonight, Lord. And if there be anybody in their families who are ill, Father, I pray in Jesus' name for healing. For this council, I pray for knowledge, wisdom, and discernment. I pray that you knit their hearts together to be in one accord as they make these decisions for what's best for this city. And Father, we thank you for your hand of protection over this city, Lord. We thank you for things that you are doing that we cannot and see. We love you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. And Sodom, can we please have low hall?
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanschard.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman McKinney.
Here.
Councilwoman Tuvich.
Present.
Troy Slattery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julenowski Records Corp. Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawkes. Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall bulletin board on Thursday, December 9, 2021.
Very good. Before we get into the meeting, I've had a request from a member that please be reminded to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear. And that request also included council members. Apparently, as you get further back in the room, if we don't speak directly into the microphone, it gets more difficult to hear. So we'll try to remind ourselves to do that. So let's proceed, council. Are there any council comments regarding the agenda? You've all had an opportunity to look at the agenda over the last few days. Is there any comments or anything anyone would like to say? Ms. Odom, please make note, there are no comments. Second thing on the agenda, if you follow us, public comments on non-agenda items. What this simply means, if it's on the agenda, you will have your opportunity to speak to it at that time. If there's something that you want to speak to that's not on the agenda, it's not, there's no bounds to it. You can talk about anything that you want us to know, any opinions you have, what you like about what we're doing, what you don't like about what we're doing. So this is an opportunity now to come up and approach council about anything you would like to speak to that's not on the agenda. Ms. Odom, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Russ. I have some signed up for specific agenda items. I don't have anyone signed up to speak under public comment at the beginning of the meeting. But I do that Mr. Art Jones, that made a request to speak and had some photos that she wanted us to check.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to be on the non-agenda.
Okay, that's where we are now.
Okay.
This is your, your stage. There you go. Name, name an address, please.
Art Jones, 12163 Palmetto Way. And I'm showing you, the council members, some pictures that I took yesterday. And you can see the ditch there filled with water. This is at the intersection of Magnolia Street and Palmetto Way. That culvert there is totally crushed. And it has been for a long time. We didn't really have very much rain yesterday, and it fills up. Take another look. It's, you know, it, it, and it just stagnates there. And the trucks come through, the garbage trucks, if you get, try to get emergency vehicle through there, UPS, they're all just keep running it and running it into the ground. So I'm here to request the council to authorize, you know, some money to get a culvert to fix that. It's been going on for quite a while. There's a sign, it's right at Magnolia Street and Palmetto Way. So if that could get fixed, that would be really nice. It's just backing up. It doesn't allow any drainage. It's affecting the neighborhood there. I know y'all voted the other, the other month to, you know, authorize a appraisal of a building and, you know, for $3,000. I think this would probably cost like half that, 1,500. So I'm asking the council to look into that and see what it's going to take to get that done. All right, that's what I want to say for that. On the second item, I've got one other item to talk to the council about. I went to the legislative delegation on Friday down in Citrus County and spoke to Senator Wilton Simpson and Ralph Masulo about getting a grant to help clean the Lower Rainbow River. And they were very positive in their comments. So I'm going to go ahead and start the procedure to, to work at applying for another grant. That, I met with one of the contractors this morning down in Crystal River, and they've got someone there to help us with grants. So I just want to make sure the city is, you know, right along with it and informed with, with what we're doing with that. The Lower Rainbow River is just full of silt. It's been building up for years. There's been studies done and stuff. And what we've done in Kings Bay is we've dredged out the silt with diver vacuuming, very carefully, making sure we're not sucking up any turtles or anything. And then replanting eel grass. And it is absolutely phenomenal what has happened in Kings Bay down in Crystal River. And they've just started another project in Homosassa. We're in our second year. So the governor has allotted $100 million towards Springs Restoration. And so I'm hoping we can get a piece of that for the Rainbow River. Talked to the contractor there, she's seeing Shoreline. At some time, they'd like to come up and do a presentation to the council and stuff as this progresses. But they feel they could manage the three projects, Homosassa, Crystal River, and Rainbow. All together, they've got the equipment, they've got the people. So we're close enough to hopefully get some of that attention.
Very good. Art, I attended that delegation with you. And I have to say, I was very impressed how the senator, who happens to be the Senate President, and Representative Masulo both knew you by a first-name basis. And they were very well aware of your work in Crystal River. And that brought a lot of weight to your request to direct it this way. So my impression was, whoa, you know, you got some connections. So it'd be really great if we could tie into some of the good work you've already done at Crystal River. We're excited about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Hey, thank you for that. That's great. And just that we can see what your proposal looks like, can you give us a copy? That way we can perhaps write a letter of support and sound intelligent when we do.
Sure, sure, absolutely. As this all jells together, I want to keep you as informed as possible.
And that way we know what, exactly. So that'd be perfect. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your hard work. And that's part of the volunteering that is so wonderful in this city. So thank you very much.
One last question, Art. On Palmetto Way, the photos that you showed, were they indicative of just one area, one culvert? Or was it, were you suggesting the entire road?
Well, no, that, just that one culvert is the one that's totally crushed. The rest of them are still working to some degree or another, but that one is totally crushed. And it's not letting any water go through at all, and it's just all backing up. So it's just that one particular spot. I'm not asking for the whole road or anything like that, but, you know, whatever, you know, the council can authorize Troy to take a look at that. And, and, you know, there's going to be a cost of a culvert, and you've got to bring a little backhoe and dig it up and put anyone in there.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Troy, do you have any idea on how much that would cost doing things?
I couldn't give you a cost estimate on that particular thing right now, but I do know that we've started work with the engineers for all of those intersections to replace those culverts and to fix the drainage of the entire neighborhood. We did get awarded that ARPA funds this year, and we'll be getting more funds next year. So we are beginning the process and getting that done. In the meantime, I will head out and take a look, see if there's something we can do to alleviate the pooling there for now. So.
And I think that's, that's a good point. We realize to do a comprehensive job takes time, money, and studies and whatever. Whatever, whatever we can do to ameliorate some of the issues while we're trying to do the whole thing. For instance, if we could just get that one culvert operating properly, in the meantime, that would be helpful.
Right, right. So we'll start on that tomorrow?
Okay, love. Mr. Lee, you're recognized.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Charles Lee, Director of Advocacy, Audubon, Florida. I just wanted to thank you for the wonderful discussion you've had at your workshop regarding the turnpike extension issue. The meeting at Marion County is coming up fairly quickly on the 21st. I know that you have some formalities you have to go through before you can process a resolution. But I'm hoping that you can get your word to the Marion County Commissioners before that meeting. I think that Marion County's weigh-in on this is extremely important. And I know that if Dan Allen can get your message to the commission as a whole, it will make a difference with them. So we're hoping that you can find a path to do that.
Yes. I am aware, we are aware, that the county commission meeting is on the 21st. And I have been told that they are going to also have the turnpike extension on that agenda.
Right.
And it would carry a lot of weight if somehow, some way, we would have our resolution ready and prepared. So it's on their desk when they have their, their meeting. So we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the meeting.
Well, any communication that you give, I know that two years ago, when these matters came up, you did act previously. There was some different people on the council then, some of you. But nonetheless, it's something that's not without precedent where you've established policy before. So communicating a message to them is, is really important so they can, it can sink in before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else, whether you're signed up or whether you've just decided to speak? Yes, Dr. Eno, please. Name an address.
Remember, Eno, 9220 Southwest 93rd Circle, Rainbow Springs. As a follow-up to what Charles Lee asked you, what is going to be the gist of the response that you do provide to the county? If I may ask at this point. I know I fed to you a resolution that had been drafted by No Roads to Room Group and so on. And we put some input into that as well. That resolution is primarily driven at the idea of having a no-build option. So that when it gets down to the DOT making some kind of choices, Northern A and B and C and D would be dismissed in favor of no-bill. And I'm sure Valery understands what I'm saying here. On the other hand, rather than the resolution necessarily aiming toward a no-build option, I'd be in favor of grabbing the bull by the horns and making your transmission to the county, no-build now. I mean, just say, flat out say, forget your toll roads, seek them where the sun doesn't shine, and let's get on with our lives. Thank you.
Dr. Eno, it is my understanding through the discussion and the consensus that this council said there were no qualifications in what proposals we were against. The council said we were against the toll road extension, so by that, it means all of them. There was never a discussion whether we're for the northern or against the southern or whether. So we're against all of them that have been proposed, according to our discussion.
Saying what I said in my last comment.
Correct. So I'm just verifying that's what our position is.
You know.
That's up to you. Okay, with anybody else, I can see, yes, Miss Dunn, please. Name and, name and address.
Kathy Dunn, 1138 Sixth Hendrick Drive. Troy put the sign that flashes and tells you how fast you're going on Bostick that seemed to work really well to slow people down as that is a 15 mile an hour speed limit. And I was wondering, is there any way that the city council could direct our public safety officials to put, move it to 41 to remind our citizens and people coming through to slow down as we're trying, hoping to develop this into a pedestrian and biking community? And even five to 10 miles an hour over the speed limit is a big deal when you look at what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
My, my comment would be pretty much directed to the chief. Where we can put the sign, whether we can put it on only city roads, whether we can put it on county roads, whether we can put it on state roads, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Chief, are we limited, are we limited where we can put it within the city limits, the sign that she's referring to?
No, without that, officers out there almost every day.
Okay, so the answer is, we can put the sign. So, okay. Yes, absolutely, please.
I live on Bostick Street, and I didn't see that much difference. Speeding, there's no way you're going to stop them all. I have noticed speeding on Bostick Street quite, and I don't like it either. One guy came down and he was like, he was on International Speedway in Daytona. That's true. Even on 41, it is horrible.
We just had that test, we just had the county do the measurement, though. They had the report on last month, correct, chief?
Traffic volume?
The traffic volume and speeds. Okay.
I'd like to make a comment that, I can remember when that speed indicator sign was out on 41. And I really do think it made a difference because you would see people hitting their brakes. You would see the brake lights.
Where you're mostly passing.
Especially those people that are passing on through and they're not cognizant of, this is a very busy area, traffic lights and so on. And people turning off lanes left and right. So I'm for all putting that sign back out there again. Thank you.
Well, the one thing I can add, analyzing the study that was just done on speed limits and traffic counts, it showed that approximately 5% of the vehicles that pass that monitor, and 10,000 a day pass the monitor, approximately 5% were going 10 miles an hour or more faster than the speed limit. So when you figure there's 10,000 people that have gone past it, 5% would be of 10,500. So that means in a 24-hour period, 500 people were going 10 miles an hour faster than that. So even though the, the 95% of the people are not speeding, sounds really good and impressive, 5% means 500 people in a 24-hour period are speeding. So if you, if you do that per hour, that would mean over a 24-hour period, there's two people going 10 miles an hour or more every, every hour. So, you know, you can make an argument that there are, there are some issues here. Okay, is there anybody, is there anyone else that would, would like to speak? Okay, Ms. Odom. We now go to the consent agenda. If you're following closely, the consent agenda takes us through items 1, 2, 3, 4. Those that are familiar with the process knows that council will discuss and possibly pass all four of these at one time. Number one, briefly is the council minutes. Number two is to authorize the grants. What was that, Mandy?
It's a request to put back up, is it Florida's website?
Website, yeah, correct. We're going to help with the website. Number three is a big one. It's us awarding the contract for the paving of Ohio Street and the other street next to it. Fourth one is to, we had a request to reduce a lien on a piece of property so the, so the man could refurbish it. So is there anybody that would like to make a comment on the consent agenda, which includes the four items I just described? Okay, please make note, there is no public comment. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Please note, passed unanimously. But now, we're right at item number five. We just stepped through one through four with that vote. I'm going to turn this over to Vice Mayor Hanschard, item number five. It's all yours, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As we all know, the city has started a volunteer program here in Dan Allen. As a, as a child, I started volunteering. I think it's in my DNA. My daughter, Nita, says many of y'all know, has the same DNA. She's still volunteering. When I was in junior league, I, you know, it wasn't always a cup of tea and you're pinky out. You were doing the hard work and you were, I mean, I remember being in my beautiful long gown, taking, and I was the chairwoman of our biggest event that we just raised like $35,000, $40,000 at, and I was carrying the trash down the stairs in my beautiful gown. So I, I personally know that volunteering, you don't usually do it to have somebody pat you on the back and make sure that you're awarded anything. But I can always tell you that being recognized, even if it's just a small thank you, can mean the world. And it means that nine times out of 10, you thanked me, so that means I'm going to come back and do it again. Not because I got to thank you, but because I was appreciated and it was noticed. And again, it's not to put a feather in your hat and to go announce to the world that you did something big, great, or small. It's just, it's nice to be noticed every once in a while. So that's why I wanted to go ahead. And even though we've only, well, I don't think we've only done one project, but they did do the beautification of the city hall. And Troy and Michelle and the staff really worked hard on getting this volunteer program up. We made sure the application was acceptable to all. And I look forward to not always having to give out a pat on the back every time there's a project done. But I do want to recognize that this is the first official one that was done, and it is appreciated. It is with a grateful heart that it was done. And it's just a thank you to say you were noticed and it's appreciated. So with that said, if you hear your name, I'd like for you to go see Ms. Michelle. She has a little present for you and a certificate. So, Ms. Gretchen Martin? You know what, if we'll get everybody to maybe stand up at the front, and that way, uh-uh, Ms. Gretchen, get back up here. All directions. No, if y'all will stand up. Ms. Mary Ann Ermatinger? Susan Gillian? No. John Setzer? Dusty Walters? Don DeWitt? Mr. Leo Thomas, he was out on Saturday, and he's just, oh my gosh, he's wonderful. Julianne Madonka? Kathy Dunn. And I don't see her as well, Natalie Dunn. And Wally Dunn as well. And I'd just like to say, the gift is nothing spectacular, but many hands make light work. And so that's what the little gift is. So anyway, thank you all again for all your hard work, and I look forward to taking time and volunteering with you one day. So thank you all very much. Troy, get in a picture with us. Yeah, Troy, you were, you were a big part of that. Georgina. Georgina's wanted in so many stages, you know.
May I make a real quick comment about that? It would be like one second. Thank you all for that, and we are really excited about it. And by doing this, we hope to open up the eyes of the citizens in Dan Allen and their electric representatives to the scope of the light that exists. And the fact that our Public Works Department has so few people that they're busy putting out fires, and they don't have time to go on and do the things that really need to, have really needed to be done for a while. And so we feel like that we're hoping to increase the size of our Public Works Department and our code enforcement. So we feel like cleaning up what we have will lead to increased residential and business developments. We're hoping to have a citywide cleanup day in the spring on Earth Day. It involves the whole community. And we are also hoping to involve local civic clubs and schools to get them to help us have trash cleanup days, especially to get the youth involved so that they will think before they litter. The other thing is thank you to Troy, who was so enthusiastic about this back in March of 2020, and has been instrumental and enthusiastic in helping us to accomplish this. So we thank you very much.
Go to item number six on the agenda, a special recognition award for one of our key longtime employees, Dan Adams. Manny, are you going to make the recognition? You are, Georgina, please, okay? Speak up and speak loud and clear.
This is a special council recognition to Mr. Daniel Adams. He's not going to be able to be here today because of personal commitments, but it simply says, "A recognition of your heartfelt dedication to the Dine community and its citizens. You are hereby commended for your exemplary service within the city's Code Enforcement Division during a time in which the city was challenged in addressing code issues on a reactive basis with minimal staff. Your participation and resourceful insight regarding the duties and responsibilities of this essential body deserves generous praise. You are hereby applauded for going beyond your call of duty and serving as an extraordinary code enforcement officer, enforcing laws that prohibit the existence of conditions deemed to be a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare. Upon recently learning of the violation that presented a danger to the public, your thorough reporting and accurate rapid response proved invaluable. We heartfelt, with heartfelt gratitude, pride, and appreciation for your dedicated service and to..." and enthusiasm and commitment, Dan Allen City Council, 7/13/2021."
Thank you very much. Thank you, Georgiana.
My pleasure.
We move on to item number seven. As you know, those that have been coming to council meetings, you know, over the last several months, council has labored diligently along with tremendous public input on this. This is the first reading of this ordinance, of the Blue Run Park ordinance. It's part of the process of turning it into law. As you all know, this is the first reading. We will have a second reading and then council will decide whether to enforce. So Andrew, I'm going to turn it over to you. You can maybe give an overview of what this is and then we can have a public comment after you've described what this is.
Mayor, I'd be happy to. All city councils aware that a few months ago, city council began looking at developing rules for Blue Run Park to place them within the city code. Previously, there were rules by resolutions and it's my understanding that city council wished to update those somewhat and incorporate those into the code per the direction of the original management plan. Accordingly, city council, over the past several months and meetings, has developed this ordinance, which incorporates some new regulations that are necessary along with existing regulations. And that has gone through several workshop processes and been discussed at length. And now you have an ordinance, an ordinance in front of you for first reading. I briefed city council on the newest edits to this ordinance at the, this previous workshop on Wednesday. In addition, city council has reviewed and is considering, or will be prospectively considering, some updates to the management plan. And the way it has been scheduled and discussed right now, this is coming first for first reading. And presumably in January or some date after that, city council will be reviewing the management plan updates, which presumably will be adopted prior to second reading this ordinance. And then second reading would follow and this would be adopted ultimately to become affected, or become effective, pardon me, on April 1st, 2022. One thing I would draw your attention to is there is a blank in the very first whereas clause. And that will be filled in for second reading because second reading is going to occur immediately after the adoption of the management plan, which I, it's my understanding is most likely going to occur in January, but it's being left blank just until that is, that's confirmed with the staff. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I have nothing further to present.
Okay, so let's now let the public comment on it and then based on their comments, we can address the questions and whatever. We know this is very important to a lot of people. It's important to us. All right, at this time, would anybody like to make a comment on agenda item number seven? Name and address and try to speak up as loud as you can.
William Bivert, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road, gentlemen. Are you all tired of hearing me talk about this? Well, I'm really excited that we're finally moving ahead with this. It solves a couple of problems that we had in 2008 when we did the management plan requirement of FCT was that we have an ordinance, but somehow we ended up with a resolution that was written in 2015 that did not satisfy the need to have an ordinance that could be enforced. So this satisfies that. What it also does is it produces a set of rules which the public can use to understand how they can use the park. So from a public perspective, I think we have a set of rules now that provide good direction in terms of the public, can they use the park? What can they do, what can't they do? The other issue, which is somewhat controversial, is the issue of commercial use has been clarified. We had most of the discussion was on commercial use. I think we've now clarified the issue. The park is for the people. It's a people's park. That's what the funds were originally set up for. It's not for commercial use. It's not for business. We have an exception to that, which is the KP hole shuttle, which we all support that, but nothing beyond that. There's a couple of thank yous involved with this, not to get into too much detail. I want to thank Mayor White for taking this on. This was sort of a kamikaze mission from the beginning and you stayed with it. We have lots of public input and I think the result was a better ordinance. Also, I have to thank Andrew for being a great partner in this. Andrew, we had fun with the debate and nobody got hurt, thank goodness. So I'm happy that we finally ended up with a resolution. Especially, I want to thank Mandy. She's the unseen champion of this project, that she was, did all the, getting it on the agenda, public comments, communicating with Andrew, with the mayor and so on, and providing a good layers on defending all the people who are interested in doing this. So thank you, Mandy, for doing a great job with this. I don't think it would have been as good as it is if you had not participated. With a little indulgence, I'd like to make a couple of comments about my friend Paul and a friend who I think all of you.
That's most appropriate, please.
Hopefully, there's no one in this room that does not call Paul Maripino a friend. Paul moved to Dan Allen in 2003. I met Paul, and some of you heard this story, because his toilet broke. And he was in a rental house down by a friend of mine, so he called and asked me if I would come and look at his toilet. And having been in a park manager for many years, like Troy, we know how to fix toilets. That's something we learned in the very beginning of a career in park management, right, Troy?
Absolutely.
Number one. So I went up to fix his toilet. And out comes Sandra with books of birds and all these interesting things that she was obviously a conservationist. So we hit it off right away, invited me to an RRC meeting. I met Bertino and from there it was 18 years of productive work and fun and achieving things for Dan Allen. Paul loved Dan Allen. He was Rainbow Springs. He loved Rainbow Springs. He did many projects at Rainbow Springs, but he really loved Dan Allen and he loved the rainbow work. And there was never a day when either I didn't talk to Paul or he didn't talk to one of you, or we didn't meet somewhere with Louise very often to discuss a project for the benefit of Dan Allen. Of course, the one that you all know most about is Blue Run Park. And that actually began with Paul. He would not admit that, but he made a call to Trust for Public Lands one day. He called me up and he says, "I just talked to Public, Trust for Public Lands and we have the Rainbow River Corridor project, which Paul wrote, and it's been circulated all around state agencies by now. And we were looking to purchase a property on, out of the Rainbow River Corridor project." And Paul had called up just out of the blue, which is what he does. He called up the Trust for Public Lands to see if they would help us. And they said they wouldn't. We had a meeting on Tom Haller's porch. I think Louise, you were there and Bert was there and they agreed to help us and facilitate the purchase of Blue Run of Dan Allen Park. And that was the beginning of it. And the question, why did we pick Blue Run Park out of all the properties on the Rainbow River that were in the corridor project? Because it was under threat of development. There was a project for a hotel there and 31 houses. It was under, before the planning commission, I don't know if you were there or not, Brandon. But, so we thought that would be the best priority, plus Marion County, and I see Jim is hiding back there again. The KP hole shuttle was operating out of there, so we wanted to maintain and keep that going. So there are a number of combinations why we did that first and also because it scored very high. The water communities trust program operates on points. And the more points you get, the higher your rating. So one day we found ourselves up in Tallahassee before the FCT selection committee, before Tom Pellum, who at that time was the Secretary of Department of Community Affairs. Jim was there, an entourage from RRC, from City of Dan Allen. Louise was our representative. She was the spokesman who got the short straw to present the program. Louise got up in front of the council and before she got to say more than about two sentences, Tom Pellum says to Louise, "Louise, sit down. You don't have to say anything. You have enough points your project is worth." For $3.2 million. So we were pretty excited about that. We all went home. We thought, well, we're going to get $3.2 million. We're going to buy a park. And then we get a call from Grant Gelfark, who was the chairman of the FCT. He says, "Well, you know, you don't get any money until you finish the management plan." We thought, oh my God, what are we going to do now? So we went on the computer, we looked up what the requirement was and we thought, oh, this is a monumental project. So Paul and myself and Jim from Marion County, we started to work on the management plan. So it was a cooperative effort between RRC and the City of Development and Marion County. And we worked on that for, I guess, about a year we took. And finally, our management plan was approved. And that is really what led to Blue Run of Dan Allen. But Paul, there was not one step in the process of doing the grant, writing the management plan, working with Jim in Marion County on the site plans and every tiny little part of it, whether it was a kiosk or a map or a brochure or a trail or any part of that project, Paul was directly involved with. It was something that he loved doing. One of the latest things we did, working with Troy, I said, "Paul, you know, we needed to get those exhibits done. That was in the management plan. We never got them done. We want, we want to put themed exhibits along the trail." Next thing I know, I get a phone call from Paul. He talked to Dorothy Crenu from the nuclear energy humidity outreach program. I guess that's where she's from. And Dorothy calls us up and says, "We've got $2,500. You can start your exhibit." So we did. So we all worked together and Paul was very instrumental. Of course, we called Paul a map man, so he likes doing maps. So Paul and I worked together in getting an exhibit done. We got it approved through Marion County. I don't know if you can hear me. Next thing you know, and this is one of the other things that Paul loved to do, he loved bringing people together. And when we did the exhibit project, I think, one of the quotes I remember from Troy saying, "I'm excited," he said. So Troy is there from Dan Allen. We've got OTT there and Mickey Thompson is there. I remember Mickey and I were down on the ground putting shims under the bench that had been donated. And I said, "Mickey, you know, we're back where we started." The department is, we're back on the ground with our hands in the dirt. Around a time.
Well.
All right, so I'll stop. But anyway, I think if we take a look at Paul's involvement and his commitment to Dan Allen, the tree ordinance, the river protection ordinance, the Blue Run Park trails, the exhibits in Blue Run Park, Dan Allen Cove, of course, one of the most recent things. When that looked like it was dead, Paul kept it alive. And right now it's waiting to be approved for the A-list in Florida Fever Program. The $300,000 grant that we got to do the parking lot and the tax access at Blue Run Park, that was done by Paul and myself. We found, we found a source of funding, the community funding initiative. We went to Jim and Jim was always looking for another project. And there was no consultant piece involved at all. Jim did all the design work. So between the three of us, particularly with Paul's interest, and it was just one project after another, every day, the fellow would bring, even up to a few days before he passed away, we were still talking about park projects.
Thank you, Bill.
One final thing.
Thank you.
Just for, he loved meeting you and your group out on the trail. He talked about that all the time.
I enjoyed meeting him on the trail also. He always wore that smile.
Yeah, he had a wonderful smile. He would sit on the bench and Sandra did this just about a week ago, if you remember. He would sit on the bench and talk to the people as they went by. And he would have her brochure and he would find out where they're from. He just enjoyed that, I think. He said, he did say, that of all the things he had done, nuclear energy, his defense industry, he said, "The best thing he had ever done in his life was with them." Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. To add to what Bill has said, I talked with Paul's wife, Sandra, today, just to see how she was doing. And talked a little bit about Paul's final days. And she told me that up until his final day, he still had the computer on his bed, working out the details of Blue Nine Island Cove. He was still working on it in his final hours. So that doesn't surprise me. And one more thing I can add about Paul, these words of praise and adulation. If he were sitting in this room right now, and he might be, he'd be saying, "No, no, don't, you know, I don't feel comfortable." He was an amazing guy and it's going to be some big shoes to fill for sure. Before we go further, Mr. Cooliard, I didn't know that you were here. Welcome. I don't know how I can miss you, but for everyone, you know this, Jim Cooliard. He is the Director of Parks and Recreation for Marion County. Whenever you hear about Blue Run Park, you hear about Paul, you hear about Bill, and you hear about Jim Cooliard. So these three were the three amigos, I think, that had as much to do with putting that all together. And Jim, I will tell you this, that that park is a life and soul of Dan Allen. It is so important and it's so well-received. And we care about it and we appreciate everything the county's doing and we look forward to our continued working together with it.
Thank you for that. And you're absolutely right. And I think you can see by how much people care about it and what you're doing here tonight to help protect it. Thank you, Andrew. It has been a pleasure working with you on this. It's been very interesting and obviously, Mandy and Mayor yourself, all of our meetings leading up to this. And I'll just echo everything that Bill mentioned. Paul is probably one of the most respected, gentle, and humble people I've ever met or worked with. So greatly missed, but we've got great memories to build off of what he's done for this area. And I think we should honor that. That's all I have.
Did you hear that the springs that were verified are going to be named after him?
Yes, I did.
How do you like that?
I think that's just wonderful. I really do. I mean, if you think about it, Maripino Springs is a nice spring to, you know.
Thank you.
I have a question. Your beard looks awful Santa-ish. Sure you're not moonlighting?
No, follow me on Instagram. You'll feel how, you'll see how I feel about that.
I'm sorry.
I get that joke all the time and especially this time. It's okay.
That's a compliment.
I own it. That's the whole point, right? Thank you.
I was delighted to say, I love that trail. I walk it every day from Blue Run Park to C39 and back. And I've met some very friendly people on that trail. Very friendly people. And we know each other's names. So it's very, very nice. And when I got back this morning, though, it was full. The parking lot was full.
One thing I could share with you, Jim, is today, later on during council comments, I'm going to show a few pictures of the tunnel under 41.
Oh, yeah.
And it's looking like it's ready to open anytime. They were out there watering the sod. That's how far along it is. And the pictures I'm going to show are quite amazing. It's going to be something.
Oh, yeah.
It is done first class.
Someone asked me this morning, "How are they going to enforce this 20 now per hour speed limit?" I was asked that this morning. I said, "I have no clue. Somebody told me I was breaking it because I walk too fast."
Well, Jim, while you're here, I'll ask you a question. With the, how popular the park is right now for its recreation use? And if you go out in the morning, night in the morning, there's people everywhere walking and dogs during the course of the day. With as popular as it is right now, what are your feelings as it will be expanded in its use now that it's connecting into the Lakucha Trail? You know, we have something that's loved and it's working well, but there's a lot of plans, additional plans for its use. Is the county discussing, you know, where you might be a year from now, two years from now and?
As far as additional plans?
Well, let's say bikers.
All right.
A big influx of people on bikes.
It's coming.
And with people walking with dogs.
It's going to come. I mean, it's just, it's going to happen. So your local business community should be engaged with this. Obviously, I know we've met not too long ago with some DEP representatives about the Trail Town designation that was brought forth to council years and years ago. Might be something that you're ready to re-entertain. There was a coalition meeting that we were at a few weeks ago. There was representatives from DEP about that. But if you build it, they will come. So these long recreational trails that are connected and separated from vehicular traffic, like you're planning on doing, the good support that we're getting from Representative Harding for the legislative appropriation items for the Pennsylvania Ave improvements and the bridge over the river, at least for now, to get that separated access is going to be phenomenal. So when we start talking about crowd management and how we do it, we're going to have to be very proactive in how we find solutions to accommodate all the trail users, not just one, not just the floaters, but everybody.
Yeah.
We've seen that one coming.
Yeah, and I don't want to feather this into the season, but then we know in the season, the challenges that are with that. And now we have increased activity coming our way. So you can kind of see, you know, we've got something to talk about.
I think we're going to need some more volunteers out there to do some real studies and really start asking people what they need and what their enjoyment is, where they're from, and start really cataloging that data. Because you're going to see periods of use and periods of time when the use subsides a little bit. So when it's really hot out, people are in the water. When it's cool, they're on the trails and they're biking more. So can't rely on seasonal use.
I was able to read your correspondence saying there seems to be some renewed interest by the county in the concept of a weather shelter.
Yes.
Which, as you know, I spoke to that at a council commission meeting several months ago. Seemed like everybody was taken a little off guard by that. Seemed like everybody was taken a little off guard by that presentation, but I'm glad to hear it's kind of rolling legs right now.
We have architectural plans already approved, so it's just a. Bathroom project's still a hot item with the board. So it's the cost of construction is what is really keeping that thing in our back pocket right now. So funding for it's not there, especially at that level.
One question I'd have related it. And thanks for coming. This is very helpful. Jim was very instrumental in talking to the commissioners to getting, putting together a matching donation of 50,000 from the county, along with 50,000 from an individual, to go to our Little League. And I watched the video, Jim, and I was very impressed on how you pushed that point. You know, we're really keen and excited about that. One question I would have for you, though. The commissioners made it clear through their questions to you that it was coming out of Parks and Recreation budget.
Different options are available right now, so we're not sure if that's coming out of an existing project or if it's coming out of our fees fund or if it's coming out of reserves. The board has decided not to take any action yet until the lease between the state and the city is made current. And then the city and the county enter some type of agreement to help indemnify us. Because if we send our crews or our contractors using funding from the county, they want to be protected by that. And, and after seeing the facility, it really raised their concern for that.
So my lead off of my comment and your response would be if this does go forward, which it looks pretty good. Jim, we're looking pretty good about getting a renewal on it.
Yes, sir. It's in legal review right now, which I'm going to assume is the final review of the lease agreement. So we've got the question out there exactly when can we expect it?
Thank you. So, so the follow-up question would be, as much as we are enthused, grateful, thankful for the $50,000 match, the question would be that 50,000, if it does come out of your Park and Recreation Fund, would that compromise your ability to go forward with some of the projects in Blue Run Park? Because you've used 50,000 out of your recreation fund.
I think the restroom project funding is going to be a major topic. That'll be a specific board item when we start talking about that. We're supposed to be bringing back about five different options for that. As far as the shelter goes, that's not currently identified in our CIP, but we're going through that process right now. We're already preparing for our next fiscal year budget, even though we just started this one. So we can actually plug in money for that now, which we can do. So if it impacts any of our other non-dedicated funds, that would be ideal. There was discussion about dipping into the reserves as well. So hopefully, for me, that's where I would like to see the funding come from instead of.
As we all know, one of the major impediments, particularly to the restroom, is how the prices have escalated greatly beyond what your budget was looking at. So my concern with my question is, well, if you're taking 50,000 out, does that complicate your ability to find funding for the restroom?
All those projects are line item in our budget. It's not just one big pot of money. So if there's funding in our budget just for Blue Run of Danellin restroom, that's how it's identified. So no one has dipped into that pot. So we have used a little bit of the CDVG money that we, about $1,300 in that fund, but the rest of our funding's still intact.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always. Anybody else have any questions, comments? It's always great when you come, Jim. Thank you.
I just have a comment that, besides people and bikes out on that trail, I think we can start calling Danellin a dog-friendly city because I have yet to be out there and not see half a dozen people walking multiple dogs. So that's, that's a boon for our city, definitely. Be able to put that on our website at some point. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
My comment I had is, it'll address the problem of congestion on the trails.
We're going to have discussion.
We'll talk about it later.
We're going to, we're going to have discussion. We're still in public comment.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Let's go back to item number seven. This is public comment on the Blue Run Park ordinance. Anyone else want to make a comment before council deals with it? Okay, looks like Ms. Odom. Any, anyone on the Zoom or anything? All right, so public comment has been accepted and listened to. We have a proposed, a proposed motion. Does anyone move ordinance 2021-02 be read by title only?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mandy, would you read that, please?
Ordinance number ORD 2021-02, an ordinance of the City of Danellin, Florida, amending Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danellin, amending Article 1 of Chapter 46, creating Article 3, Blue Run Park, establishing rules and regulations for Blue Run Park via ordinance, establishing, establishing fines for violations, establishing the appeal process, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. All right, now we have a proposed motion. Do we have a motion for ordinance 2021-02 to be approved?
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor and a second by Ms. Williams. Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, council. That's a major step forward. Completes our first reading on that ordinance. We go to item number eight on the agenda. This is the first reading of ordinance 2021-03, Animal Control. Andrew, you want to get us up to the speed with this, yes?
Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to. This is essentially an ordinance that is, is doing two things. First and foremost, it is, is clearing out Danellin's regulations regarding animal control and replacing those with Marion County's in order for the City of Danellin to enter into an agreement with Marion County to provide enforcement. Most of the rules are very, very similar. It's just adopting, adopting Marion County's ordinance by reference. Danellin does have some unique rules regarding chicken keeping, and those have been kept and just relocated from article, or it's actually not even a relocation. They just have been renumbered. They're still within the same article. Article has just been renamed. And then there's a special section for chicken keeping within Danellin's Code of Ordinances. It should just be adopted. And that's all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, at this time, do we have any public comments on item number eight on the agenda? Any public comments? Anything on Zoom, Mandy?
No, sir.
Please note that the public has had an opportunity to comment, and there have been no comments. We have a proposed motion to move ordinance 2021-03 be read by title only. Motion?
So moved.
Second? Ms. Williams, any discussion? A vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Odom, would you please read?
Ordinance number ORD 2021-03, an ordinance repealing provisions of and amending Chapter 14 Animals, providing animal control services through adoption of provisions of Marion County Animal Control Ordinance and enforcement through interlocal agreement with Marion County, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Now we have a proposed motion, ordinance 2021-03 to be approved. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Ms. Williams, seconded by Vice Mayor. No discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we go to number nine on the agenda. It is now. Read it first, okay?
All persons wishing to address the City Council will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing City Council or boards and commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship, any said business, professional, or financial interest within the individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we do this. It is now 6:32 PM, and I closed the regular meeting and opened the public hearing to discuss. This is ordinance 2021-04, Property Rights Element Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Turn this over to staff. Comment. Georgina or Andrew or both can comment to this, depending on how you want to do it.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to it, Mayor. What you have before you is Danellin's private property rights element that has been drafted to be included in the city's comprehensive plan. And what, what this ordinance does is satisfy some requirements that were placed upon the city and all cities and local governments within Florida by the state legislator during the last legislative session to recognize private property rights when making land use decisions. And you'll see in the exhibit of the ordinance, the language there that satisfies those requirements. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. George Diana, do you have any additional comments to this?
No. I don't have any comments.
Okay. At this time, are there any public comments on agenda item number nine? Okay. It is now 6:34 PM, and I closed the public hearing held to discuss ordinance 2021-04 and reopen the December 13th council meeting. Okay. Have, have we had a public comment on this yet? Ms. Odom, yes. So we have a proposed motion to approve ordinance 2021-04. Do we have a motion to approve?
Excuse me. We need to have a motion to read it by title first.
Okay, by title only, correct. Do we have a motion to read it by title only? Vice Mayor, second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Proposed motion to move. Okay, you got to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, read it. We got it.
Ordinance number ORD 2021-04, an ordinance of the City of Danellin, Florida. Ordinance 2021-04, amending the text of the city's comprehensive plan to include a private property rights element required by general law, providing for transmission, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have a motion to move ordinance 2021-04 to be approved.
So moved.
Okay. Motion was made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? No discussion? A vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're going to item number 11, Notice of Intent to Dispose of Public Property, Bid 2021-02, 11808 North Ohio Street. Mandy, do you or Georgina speak to this first, or do we do public comment first?
I can speak to it. According to your, your agenda summary that you were provided in, that is provided as backup for the meeting, you did receive two proposals. One was received by the deadline from Foxfire Realty for $325,000. And the contract, the proposed contract had an additional term that the seller would, would require a 10-year lease by the city. I'm sorry, that the buyer would require a 10-year lease by the city. And then after the deadline, you received a second offer for $275,000, which would require another 30 days of advertising if you were to entertain that offer. And then our workshop, the direction that I took from that was that you did not want to accept either one of the proposals that were received. So the motion was formatted in a way that you could reject both proposals and appoint a real estate agent to market the property if you choose to do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. So we're looking for a motion to reject all proposals received in response to bid 2021-02, Notice of Intent to Dispose of Public Property Located 11808 North Ohio Street and appoint Fox Realty to represent the city in marketing said property.
I move. We reject all proposals received in response to bid number, bid 2021-02, Notice of Intent to Dispose of Public Property Located at 11808 North Ohio Street. I would not like it, this part of this, to be the same motion with Foxfire Realty, just that we can have some clarification on other items. So we can make it a separate amendment and a second motion. Separate them out, in other words.
So you're, you're making a motion to amend this, to cut this up into two different things. One is to agree to reject the offers previously and then to discuss through another motion about the review.
Yes, sir. For business purposes.
Okay, that is simply a request by the Vice Mayor to modify this motion. She, we need a second, correct? Andrew?
Yes, I mean, what you have right now, prior to that motion, was just a suggested motion. So that motion is on the floor in order for Councilwoman Hanischere's motion to vote forward. You would need a, move forward, you need a.
So which motion has the strength of the floor right now? Is it the one that's printed or?
The one that's printed is only a suggested motion from staff.
Okay. All right, that's suggested. All right. So kind of work me through this, Andrew. Do we take a vote on the proposed motion from staff? Or do we just leapfrog it and consider council?
Well, it's, it's not leapfrog per se because it's just a suggested, you know, form of a motion that could be taken up or not taken up. The, the motion on the floor only goes to the first part of the suggested motion accordingly. Once a public comment has been taken, you just need to have a second on that to move forward, and then you could vote on that motion.
Okay. So do we have a second on Vice Mayor's?
I'll second that.
Second it? Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. It passes four to one. So now the motion becomes to reject all proposals received in response to bid 2021, Notice of Intent to Dispose of Property Located at 11808 North Ohio Street, period. So.
That was the motion. That's what we just voted on.
Do we have a second to that?
We already seconded it. We already voted on it.
Okay, so that's already been done? So have we voted, that's done?
Yes, sir.
All right, so now we're going to the second one, right?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a second motion. And I'd like to make a motion or open up for discussion, if nothing else, the proposal that we take the property located at 11808 North Ohio Street and we remove it from the surplus position and put it into the proposal to put the city police department at that location instead of looking for other properties and put it into the position. And I'd like to say that with a lot of prayer that went into this, a lot of thought. I'd like, I know that there have been emotions from three of the council members that y'all. like, I know that there had been emotions from three of the council members that y'all ran on this as a, as your platform, part of your platform, and that at that point you promised the people that you would not spend one point two million dollars on the police department. At this time, the, what we call Souls Harbor Church, if it is renovated, we, even if it was done at the maximum, the maximum, it would be still less than, even with the purchase, less than one million dollars. If we can, and including myself, put our egos, our, I said it once, so I can't take it back, and honestly look at this with a clear mind and look at it as a business decision. This is the most cost-effective, we already own it, and by March, we could have the police department in that building. That is a motion that I would like to make, that we remove the city building out of the surplus position.
So the second part of this original motion was to decide on which realty we wanted to represent? So now your motion is totally going back to discussing whether or not we're going to have?
Well, and let me just clarify that, someone put in, appoint Foxfire Realty, and please, Ms. Van Ness, this is nothing personal against you, but we as a city council, last Wednesday, did not state that we were going to vote for one real estate company or another, or even what we were going to do. We might have tried doing it ourselves again, if I remember correctly, so I don't know where the Foxfire Realty came in, so.
Counsel, I ask for staff to make a recommendation.
To, okay, but that wasn't part of the?
So that was part of the motion.
That was how y'all proposed it, yes, but it was, it's not a, it does not have to be.
So council understands here, your motion is to remove from the discussion of picking a realty to represent this property. You're wanting to get off of that and create a motion that discusses whether or not this building will be considered as a police department?
Yes, sir. And then if we have, and if the motion dies, then of course, I'd like to ask Mr. Van Ness what his commission will be, what his proposed plan is, and those types of things to advertise the building.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Well, we get, we have to do another move.
Wait a second, wait a second. We have a motion, and the motion needs a second to go forward for discussion. If it gets a second, it goes to the next phase of discussion. If it doesn't get a second, it dies. So do we have a second on Vice Mayor's motion?
I second it.
Okay, so that puts it in the play. Okay, we have a motion and a second. That brings it for discussion. Ms. Kenny, would you?
I felt like I would be the one to begin this discussion.
Yeah.
I feel like item number ten is to discuss the police facilities, though this seems to me like we're doing it before we will actually have an opportunity to make a discussion. Unfortunately, we are a divided council when it comes to this particular subject. As a divided council, I am concerned with any decision actually that we would make at this point. I certainly am not in favor of the motion. Having, going any further, I think I would be in the next item where we discuss the police facility.
Right. So let's focus strictly on the motion that has been presented. You know, this will be a discussion and eventually a vote whether or not we're going to adopt Vice Mayor's motion, right?
Right.
Okay. Ms. Williams, do you have any comment?
I'm not working.
Ms. Kenny?
Yes, I have a comment.
Cabbage.
I don't, I think that this discussion is out of order because we have already decided to counsel three, a majority vote, put this property up for sale as surplus property. And I don't see why we are sitting here now trying to negate that decision that has already been made. Okay, but that is not what we're here for with this resolution. It is to make a determination of marketing it through a particular virtual brokerage firm and nothing else. So I hereby advise that we just put this discussion to a halt and get back to it as we suggested when we get to item number thirteen.
Okay.
Mr. Hand, can you explain this for us, why it is legal, what I just did?
Right now, you just have a motion that pertains to the topic at hand, that's essentially taking it off the table for being placed with a particular brokerage company. Having been seconded, it can go up for discussion, and you have, as a council, your full list of options is how you would, you know, like to proceed and to vote and what you could do afterwards.
Okay, I think it's pretty cut and dry. We know what the motion is. The motion is not to go forward and list it. The motion is to create a reconsideration of it as a police, a potential police site. So if discussion is over, we'll have a vote whether or not to accept Vice Mayor's motion or not. A vote yes means you want the Vice Mayor's motion accepted, which means to take it off the market and to consider it for a police station.
Not consider it, sir, to make it the police department.
Okay, to make it, that's even better. A vote no means to consider, to continue with what council is voting, which means to put it up for sale. Vote no means to list it and put it up for sale, which is what we've already voted to do. So with that said, all in favor to approve Vice Mayor's motion?
And Mayor, I would recommend taking public comment on this. I know it has been on the agenda item, but since this motion went in a bit of a different direction of what was proposed, I would just recommend that.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Would anybody, we're ready to vote on this. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment?
My name is Scott Kiefer. I'm at nine zero seven five North Cedar Cove Road. I brought this up after our city council workshop meeting last week. It was brought up because we were all in here at the time, putting a proposal forward to try and change government's mind on a decision that they had already made. I went off of that and basically came to council, it was probably the last thing of the evening, and requested that we take a reconsideration on the Ohio Street property to take it off of being for sale, since the offers were so low. And I asked that everybody please think about it before voting on this, to consider using it as a police station. After looking back through everything, the stuff I can see is we already own this property at a great price. It's clear at this point, the way it was done, we're not going to get that for it. What happens with the real estate broker, I don't know. But we're looking at gruffs, we're looking at bringing in modular buildings, everything I can see is going to cost us more than a property that we already own. The benefits of this property is, I'm thinking there's probably about sixty-five parking spaces. That's in direct downtown, the center of the historic district. It also gives an area for community gatherings down there. And the cost to fix this is a lot less than any other options that we have at this point. We can be moved into this before anything else goes on. It's a fortified structure, the outside of the building's concrete, the inside of the building's concrete. There's an area to fence off for the police vehicles, it's going to be a great safety building for the police department itself. Where it's located, I don't feel it's going to cause any problems with the community in the area. So I'm just asking counsel, before you go and make a decision to sell this property, to reconsider using it for its intended purpose. I don't want to get the politics involved, but I will say, watching all the elections and politics out there, political promises were meant to be broken. That's all I'm going to say about that part of it. And I just ask that you please relook at this. The other options seem to be more expensive, we don't know what we're getting into, we know what we have here, we know the cost, and I think the cost that we got originally was probably really inflated. It was somebody looking for everything they wanted all in one shot, the dream building. And I think if we go back and just do what is necessary, we can get into this for a whole lot less. The purchase price of gruffs is more than the estimates are going to be to rehab this building that we already own. And we already own this, so we don't have to go through the process anymore. There's no long, telling how long this is going to take. So I just ask that you please reconsider selling this building.
Thank you, Scott. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, Pastor Tom.
Tom Welch, P.O., Box 143, Dunellen, Florida. I've been here for many, many council meetings, and we have, we have beat this a long, long time. To the council's credit, I think you all have done your best to do your due diligence and just make sure whatever decision you make, it's going to cost the city the least amount of money. And just following up on this gentleman's comments, you know, we have looked at gruffs and we have looked at Powell and modular homes, and it comes down to dollars and cents. And I think without a doubt that Ohio Street is the least expensive round. I think it'll serve the purpose as we talked about a long time ago. However, it's just dollars and cents. So if that's the least expensive round, to where we are being financially responsible, I think that's a good decision, you know? You can always change your mind, and that's a beautiful thing, we have that freedom in this country, at least for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make comment? Yes, Art?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, I would just like to say to counsel again that, you know, I know that the city of Dunellen is a very old city, and in your charter, you have to provide police protection. I was living in Crystal River at the time that they looked at their police department needing new facilities and costs escalating, and they were able to negotiate with the Citrus County Sheriff to come in and at an extra fee to the sheriff, make sure that there was no response time diminishing. The sheriff's department in Marion County is like fifty-four million dollars. They have a state-of-the-art facility right up the road here. I think that the council also, in your discussions, should look at really hammering those people and say, listen, give us a real proposal. Take your time out, go down and talk to the people in the city of Crystal River, talk to the people in the city of Inverness, see how they liked what happened there. See how the sheriff's department was able to come in and take over the policing at a very affordable cost, and we believe that the sheriff did a better job in the long run. They had the better equipment, they've got, they've got a helicopter to call in, they've got animal rescue, they've got all sorts of things that our little city will never ever be able to afford. So I think that maybe, you know, we've just outgrown it, you know, and nothing against the sheriff or the police here, I think they do a great job, and the sheriff in Citrus County offered all of the police force there jobs in that sheriff's department and everything. So that's something to really seriously look at. I don't know if the council's really taken the time to go down and talk to those two cities. Both of them are only like twenty miles away, and they'll tell you their experience. You know, we're practically in Citrus County now. If the sheriff in Marion County doesn't want to cooperate, why don't you talk to Mike Prendagast down there in Citrus County and see if we can annex Dunellen into Citrus County? I knew you'd all like that. But you know, think outside the box, talk to those people, see how they liked it and stuff. So just consider all your options. But in the long run, I must say that Valerie makes sense. I mean, you already own that building, if you're talking about buying gruffs, I was like, oh my God, don't take out that one of the best restaurants in town.
Okay, thank you, Art.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak to this before we, yes, Julianne, before we vote on this
Julianne Mendon, so one one eight nine four East Blue Cove Drive here in Dunellen. I heard someone say that it was some of, you know, the recent campaign was, you know, had a specific aim about the church. My thought about that is that I think that the campaign, the new people ran on a new idea, and this council came into being one year ago and really inherited a lot of things from a lot of years gone by. So now, this council has been here only one year, making decisions based on all the years of the past. And when I look at the changes that have happened in the city within the last year, the involvement of the people and the volunteers and the, just a whole host of things, even just being able to make a comment willy-nilly without waiting all those hours, I see the decision with the police as something much bigger than the church or the amount of money. I think that all has to do with the new vision, and I don't think that we can expect this council, I don't think this council should make a quick decision because, because we've been talking about it too long, or because we just haven't been able to figure out what to do. I think that the council should take their time, and I think that the last man's comments were really accurate, that we haven't really gotten the numbers on what it might take to do things a little differently. So thanks for hearing me.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, public has spoken, and we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Again, Mandy, can you summarize the motion so everyone realizes what they're voting for?
I have Vice Mayor Handchar made a motion to remove the property located at one one zero, one one eight zero eight North Ohio Street from surplus and reconsider it as a location for the police department facility.
Okay.
That clear?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, that summarized it real, real well. Okay, a vote yes means to remove it, to remove it from consideration of selling. Vote no means to continue with the concept that we've so far pushed, which is to sell, okay? So all in favor of the motion to take it off the market and again, consider it for?
Just to clarify the word, it's not consider it.
To do it.
It's to make it.
To make it, okay.
That is not what I said.
Oh, what did you say?
All right.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what I was.
I said the motion would be to remove it from surplus and reconsider it as a location for the police department facility.
I'm sorry, take out the word reconsider, to make it the police department, and you can use a better word than make.
And utilize the location.
Utilize, that's a better word, thank you, ma'am. That's what I meant.
Okay, that makes it even more clear. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion fails, three to two.
I make a motion that we hire Fox Realty to put on the market, the real estate market, the property located at one one eight zero eight North Ohio Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, will you repeat that, please?
Is to put it, to give it to Fox Realty to list, Foxfire to list it.
Right.
We have any discussion?
Yes, sir. Ms. Van Ness, can you come to the desk, please, or the podium? Thank you. Sorry, I'm putting on my real estate hat now, sorry, sir.
My name is Van Aiken. My address?
Hi, sir, before you speak, Vice Mayor, bringing someone up to the podium is actually my responsibility.
My apologies profusely.
Okay, thank you, sir, your name and address.
My name is Van Aiken, my address is six fifteen East Silver Springs Boulevard, Ocala, Florida.
Van Aiken, thank you. Just real quick, just the common questions, what will be our commission?
It'd be six percent.
And where will you be promoting this property?
I had sent a marketing proposal into the city that was delivered to the city, and I believe emailed to each one of the I believe emailed to each one of the council members.
I apologize, I must not have read that one, my apologies.
This was back in August 30th of 2021, this year. But if you'd like for me to read it, I'd be glad to.
If you'll just kind of give the highlights of it, I'd appreciate it, thank you, sir.
My plan would develop a marketing package to include a brochure, a features, property photos, tax and zoning information, logistics and aerial location photography. The property would be listed in the Marion County MLS, Citrus County MLS, and the surrounding counties through the multiple listing and other websites. As a commercial broker, I'm a member and advertise in many commercial marketing websites, including LoopNet, Total Commercial, and CoStar. Advertisements would be placed in the local newspapers and other commercial publications as the broker deems necessary. Periodic email blasts would be sent to all contacts. Mailers would be sent to appropriate brokers, tenants, owners, prospects in the marketing area, place appropriate signage on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Vanez, and I apologize, and if we received this, I didn't, I apologize. And what will we be listing the property for?
I have not designated a price yet. I was going to do a market study on it and come back to the council with a recommendation.
And you were made aware by our attorney that any, Andrew, explain the thing about when, if he gets a proposal more than 30 days from now, how that'll work? And there's some about our advertising, and we have to re-advertise it every 30 days so somebody will have to, you do it.
That's right. The requirement comes from Florida statute 163-380-3A. And what that is, it's the statute and the community redevelopment statutes that deals with disposal of property in community redevelopment areas. There are some requirements that pertain to property that's purchased redevelopment. In this case, you have a property purchased for a police department as opposed to straight-up redevelopment purpose purchases. But anytime that there is any property that's disposed of within a CRA, this particular portion of the statute must be followed. And what that requires is that prior to disposition of any type of real property in that area, it needs to be noticed via newspaper, public notice of disposition, at least 30 days prior to the execution of any contract, the sale of property. Once that advertisement is out, there's a 30-day window for individuals, entities, anyone to respond to it. If it comes in after that 30 days, there needs to be a, there would need to be a re-advertising. So if there was a situation where, you know, if the city had advertised and no one responded, then someone came, say 45 days, you know, outside of that window, they may have an excellent proposal, the city is very interested in. In fact, this is usually how it works. Usually, the way that I've seen these sales work, the city may just have a parcel of property, they don't even have it listed. But somebody would approach the city and say, hey, I've got a great idea for this, this is what I would like to do. The city receives it favorably but says, well, we know that you want to buy the property, and frankly, we like your idea, but we still have to comply with the statute. So then 30 days' notice would go out. Anybody who's interested, including the entity or person who provided the initial interest, would have to respond again during that 30-day period, and then the city council would be obligated to consider all of those proposals at the end of the 30-day period. And so how this could work with a listing company, I have one city that I represent, for instance, that has, that acquired several properties within the CRA via foreclosure process that really haven't been ready to develop. And so they've been sitting on the market for a few years. A little bit different scenario than what's going on here in Dunellen. But to give you an example, you know, even though a broker had been working with the city to market those properties, finally, there had been some interest a few months ago, and in which case, the process that I described to you just occurred. A situation where somebody approached the city and said, hey, I see these properties are for sale, I would like to buy one, and the city said, great, certainly consider your proposal, we just have to comply with this obligation. And so the city has a few ways of handling this. It can go and just, you know, repeatedly do 30-day, 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 30-day advertisements. That has a tendency to become a bit onerous, especially if it's being marketed. It does slow down the sale of the property a bit, but CRA statutes are one of those bodies of law that does not concern itself so much with expedition of, you know, a quick sale, but rather compliance with the law. So that's how it works. Again, it's 163-380-3A. If there's any questions, or if I need to clarify any of that, I can do that.
And so, and again, trying to put on my real estate hat, so for your protection, what would be your terms of four months, six months? How long would you like the listing agreement for?
The typical commercial listing agreements are one year.
That's what I thought.
You know, it's not like selling a house, it takes some time to get it done. And plus, with this Florida statute that we're having to deal with here and disclose in any kind of offering, that we would, you know, a buyer's kind of got his hands tied, he comes in, makes a reasonable offer that thinks would be accepted, and then that offer, I guess, is advertised for 30 days, that anybody wants to come in and beat that offer, they could come in, and then it would have to be re-advertising it again with that next offer. Am I correct in my understanding?
No, sir, the offer itself is not advertised, what's being advertised is just the city's notice of intent to...
To sell.
...place the property up for sale.
Okay.
So then your first 30 days, if you don't receive a offer, then, and we would of course advertise once we would sign a listing agreement with you, correct, Andrew? Correct me if I'm wrong, so that first 30 days, we would put it out that we're listing it with you, and then if you don't get anybody else in the next 30 days, we'd have to do it again, correct?
That's just one way to do it. You can do it that way, or, there's about three different ways you can handle it. Once you start a new listing agreement, you could have an initial advertisement and create a 30-day window without somebody approaching the city, and then you could continue to do that. You could do that for that first 30 days and then just stop and let a broker, you know, do what they do, and then when they found someone who was interested, then advertise it again and go through that process. Or you could just go straight into a listing agreement and not advertise at all, let the broker do what they do, and when somebody did bite and have an interest in it, at that point, elect to put it out for the 30 days' notice.
That clear up that much for you?
What I would like to see you do is go ahead and advertise for the first 30 days, and let's see if other people come back in with another contract directly to you. And then, if you want me to come back, I'll come back, and then we'll just, we'll put it on the market, and when I bring you a contract, we'll advertise it for 30 days, here we go again, and then bring it to council, and if nobody has come in with a higher offer, then we would consider it, and if it's acceptable, y'all would accept it.
And I was going to ask you something else, very intellectual. One year, yeah. Oh, and we would, if anybody comes to the city and asks us, though, about it, even during your listing period, if they saw that it was on our 30 days and you hadn't listed with us, or we listed it with you, excuse me, then that client that would come to the city would automatically have to go to you.
Correct.
Is that how I would, okay, just making sure that's also understood, so that we can't sign off.
But the first, if you want to advertise it again for 30 days, then you could go ahead and do that, and then I'll just come back, and y'all could approve me then, or however y'all want to do it.
I would rather give you the listing it from themselves, with your Facebook department, and get it over and done with, and then, just as long as you know, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of the regulations that you were going to have to follow, that no matter, if you get a contract, if we list with you today, and we get a contract a week from now, we're going to have to make that, we're going to have to advertise with the city for 30 days.
Correct.
Before we can give them an answer.
So Andrew, if council has decided to go forward with listing it, then we don't know what the particulars are at this particular time. So if we, how do we go from where we're at right now to listing it? I mean, do we, I'm hearing this, just put it back out for bid for another 30 days, and then the listing kicks in 30 days after that? I mean, we're in, we're on a path that I don't know where we're at with this.
Well, I think the, what council, one of the things that you could do tonight, you by motion, select Foxfire, then you could ask for an agreement, a listing agreement to come back to you at the next workshop, in which case you could review it at that time, make sure you're fine with all of the terms of the listing agreement, and then from there, make that decision to advertise, and when that listing agreement becomes effective. And then just time, you could time the publication of, well, the listing agreement could become effective upon signature, but then you could decide when to instruct staff to do the initial posting, and then just see what comes back, and go from there. Some of the other things you can do, of course, if there is something you want to see that property used for, remember that within the CRA and your city council is not tied to accepting the highest offer monetary-wise. City council can consider what the property be used for, and also, you know, just, it's going to be used for something that you all would like to see, accepting a lesser offer. So you have a lot of discretion. So that's something you could even put into terms of the listing agreement, if there's something you want to see there. But procedurally, you know, probably the best way to have it come back is a listing agreement that you could review.
With a market analysis attached, that we can decide if that's the price that we want to sell it for.
And you could discuss it at that time, correct?
So what would the motion be to come back in January with a proposal?
Yes, with any particulars that you would want to see. So it may just be at this time, if it, if you do wish to move forward with a market analysis and approve that, to approve that in the interim, and then bring back a proposed listing agreement, it just depends on what activities you want to take now, but you have that, that's at your discretion fully.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, it appears you have a motion on the floor, if you will amend your motion to include the requirements of the market analysis and whatever we need for the next meeting, then we can go forward.
Get the muddy water, get cleared water? Okay, I will amend my motion, Mandy, use your words if you can, I amend the mo... I amend the motion that we request... Somebody on Zoom? Does my Zoom open in the meeting?
I've cleared it out, sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you. I move that we request Foxfire broker, Mr. Vanez, I kept saying Vanez, Van Aken, excuse me, sir, I see your signs all over, Van Aken, to give city a copy of a listing agreement for one year, and to provide us with a current market analysis to be presented at our January workshop for us to determine to list it, and that we then proceed to have the staff do advertising.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
A second motion?
Okay, any additional discussion on this? Okay, all this says is to instruct Foxfire to put it all together and come back to us in January, and then we'll decide what we want to do. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
You opposed? Okay, did you?
I mean, I will vote for this, but yes, I'm, that's why we're doing it.
Okay, so it passes four to one.
Who was one?
Ms. Williams. Okay, we go to...
Just thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I'm sorry it got a little muddy, but I hope we clarified it for you.
I think I got an understanding.
Hi, thank you, sir, I appreciate you sitting through the evening.
Maybe in the parking lot, you can explain it to me, okay?
I would if I wouldn't get you in trouble.
All right. Okay, we go to number 12.
Sorry, sir.
Kimberly Horn IPO number 99, design and construction plans for Mockingbird Drive. Troy, you can fill us in on all this, and then we'll have public comment after they hear what you have to say.
Okay, council at the last workshop, it was brought to my attention, you wanted to see if Kimberly Horn could reduce their cost for their proposed IPO for the construction, doing the designs and engineering for the Blue Cove project. Today, I received a response back from Alan Gary, I believe you guys had received a copy of that email as well. So without reading the whole email into record, I guess if council has questions about it, we can open discussion. You haven't seen it, we'll go, I'll go ahead and bring it up.
I apologize, I look my nails first in the morning.
That's okay, just wanted to make sure. So tell the public what this, what we're trying to do, the costs of it, and...
Absolutely, absolutely, okay. So it's original IPO for the design and engineering for the Blue Cove project, which includes three intersections along Mockingbird Drive, and the segment of roadway connecting all three intersections from Camp Drive to the third intersection on Wood Duck, I believe, and a short section of roadway on West Blue Cove Drive, that's from Camp Drive going west to the front of the church there. I can't remember the name of the church in Blue Cove, there's only one.
Episcopal Church.
Episcopal.
Episcopal.
Okay. His, the IPO for Kimberly Horn was $33,600. As it's broke out, it was $3,000 for data collection in the kickoff meetings, subconsultants and services was $4,000, engineering and design $17,600, and bid administration and construction phase services was $9,000. That's how the total, $33,600. So I was able to send an email out to Alan Gary, who is the engineer that I deal directly with, stating that at the council workshop, the council asked if the cost for the Blue Run or Blue Cove project can be reduced. They feel that 20%, roughly, I don't know what the actual math was, but I think we said around 20% of the total project is high, and it is on the agenda tonight, please call, and we'll go over some details. Alan was able to respond today. Do you want me to read the whole email?
No, just tell them what the cost savings is.
Okay, so in short, he defined why the costs were what they were, but then it does state, I can reduce the fees by 10%, but it will probably mean that there would need to be, would need to come back for a change order if we encounter situations like we have based on previous projects during construction. It says, please let me know if you would like me to submit, resubmit, or if the city council would be okay allowing the fees as is with the above, just as with the above justifications. If the council allows us to keep the fees as it is, I will commit to you and to them that I will credit back any portions of the contract that we do not use at the completion of the construction. I have a history of doing this with clients and can write it into a contract as well. I understand the pressures of a, that a small city faces. In the upper portion of that email, he does describe what their contingency is in there for, and the challenges that we've frequently had on other projects. So that's your response to the request.
Okay, so to, to-
To wrap it up real tight for understanding.
We have a project in Blue Cove that's including three intersections with some roadway. Council has allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this improvement. We feel that we can get it done by your estimates within the hundred and fifty. Added at one hundred and fifty, though, originally we were told that thirty-three thousand of that one fifty would be spent for engineering. It kind of caught council a little off guard, the expense of that. So that would reduce the one fifty, if you take thirty-three thousand off of it, reduces it to one hundred and seventeen thousand. So based on council's concern of the price for the engineering, you went back to them and you said, council's squeaking a little bit about this and he lopped off ten percent, which is three thousand plus dollars, right? So we saved three thousand on it. So now, the job to do it, we would have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the actual construction. And rather than pay thirty-three six, we'd be paying closer to thirty for the engineer. Okay, so that phone call knocked off over three thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, which is what we asked you to do, so job well done. So Troy, you have anything else on that before we have public comment on the project?
Not at this time unless council has individual or specific questions.
Well, let's have a public comment and then council can discuss this. Okay, you all heard what we're doing, we have in plans to do a significant road improvement project in Blue Cove. Do we have any public comments on that? Okay, no public comments. Counsel, do we have anything we'd like to talk about on this? Jan, we'll start with you first.
I have no comment.
Ms. Kenny?
No comment.
None.
Just real quick, so if we take out the ten percent, thirty-three hundred, the contingency will be taken out as well?
That is the, that is from my understanding, that is a portion for their contingency. So meaning if we have something surprising pop up during this construction that extends the project time, incurs extra engineering, you know, such as, say we run across an old abandoned facility during construction that has to go through engineering review, if it exceeds their new cost of thirty thousand plus, right? We could possibly be looking at a change order scenario.
How much does a change order cost?
Change order could be the cost of what the surprise is. So let me give you an example. When we did the CDBG downtown project, right? And all of a sudden, towards the end, we ran into a sinkhole. It was outside the scope of the work, it was unexpected, and it was not covered by that project. So we got a change order from the engineers, we got a change order from the contractors to mitigate that particular issue, right? So in this case, another example is our Bostick Street and the parking lot projects that we just did. There was a lot of setbacks because of the subs, it extended the project beyond our expectations. Therefore, the engineer had to invest more time and more trips to the site. Now, we did not get change orders for that because it was covered in their contingency of the engineering cost, right? And when we're talking about the engineering cost, we're talking about everything as far as site visits, going out to bid, everything inclusive, right? So by that ten percent being reduced, we stand a possibility of a change order if we run into a major issue. My opinion, I'm hoping that Blue Cove is a newer area of the city as far as development goes. I don't suspect that we're gonna uncover anything major. We are simply taking the old roadway surface off, checking the compaction, making sure, you know, re-compacting that area, maybe doing a couple of covert pipes. I don't foresee any major setbacks on this project.
Okay, Troy, so, oh, man. The way I'm hearing you say this, if we paid the thirty-three thousand, the company's saying, if you pay the original quote, if we run into any, some unexpected things, we won't charge you extra. But if we give you a ten percent discount, if we run into something unexpected, we're gonna then charge you.
Right, but also, the other part, not to catch up-
So I don't understand why if we pay thirty-three thousand, they'll do the unexpected gratis, but if they give us ten percent, we'll have to pay the difference. Seems like it's pretty much automatic that if I was them, I would find something unexpected and, and, and charge more.
Sure, I'm sure. So here's, let me finish this thing. I did finish it, but let me clarify one thing. If we keep it at what it is, keep the number at what it is, thirty-three six hundred, right? It says here that he will honor giving us credit at the end of the project. So if we run into no snags, no hiccups, no extra engineering time or expenditures, the project goes off without a hitch, he will credit us what they don't use. So that could be eight percent, it might even be fifteen percent.
Maybe one percent.
Maybe one percent, that's, it's, it's-
But my point, Troy, is he's saying because I'm giving you a discount, if we run into the unexpected, I'm gonna have to charge you more.
May have.
So, may have to. So then the assumption is that if you were paying the full amount, if we ran into the unexpected, we would not charge you more. Because it would seem to me whether he's charging the full amount or the reduced amount, if they run into the unexpected, charge more. So is this extra three thousand like a insurance policy? If we run into something unexpected, you won't have to pay?
Yes.
Are we doing-
Let me give you one more example, if I may, if I may. The CDBG project came in, bid on that, correct me if I'm way off on my numbers, but it was one million. It was one point zero four million dollars, okay? By the end of that project, three quarters of the way through that project, we were seventy-five thousand dollars over the original contract for the cost of that project. But by the time we completed, we came in a couple thousand dollars less than the original contract. Kimberly Horn invested a lot of time and energy to make sure we did that, but we met our timeframe, we stayed under contract. All the extra work that the engineering firm had to do, multiple individuals with that firm, we were not charged. It was in the contract to see the project through from start to finish at their cost, at their price. So if you take the ten percent out, it says possibly, possibly means we would have to give you a change order. Doesn't mean they will have to give me a change order. If it's a small hiccup, if it's a, if it only takes a one day investment, may not require that change. But there is a probability.
Okay.
But there's also a probability of getting the credit if you leave it the way it is.
Okay, Troy, thank you, let's move forward. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, do we have a motion to, to accept?
I move, we're at number twelve, correct?
That's correct.
I can just make sure. I move we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, AGR twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-two, IPO number ninety-nine, the design and construction plans for Mockingbird Drive and West Blue Cove Drive roadway project for the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
For the full amount?
Correct.
Do we have a second? Any, you second it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You second it? Okay, any, any discussion? Ms. Kenny?
What was the question?
The question is, do you have any discussion on the motion which is recommending that we, we pay the full amount, the thirty-three thousand six hundred?
Right. No, I have no, I have nothing to add to that.
Ms. Williams? You don't have any comment? Okay, you already said. I just think a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project with a thirty-three thousand dollar fee for study is kittywampus. It's, it's twenty percent of the total price of the project. It reduces the amount of money we can put into the project. It's just too much money. It's, it's not the way you do, it's not the way I do business. So if discussion is over, all, all in favor on accepting the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. And Ms. Kenny?
I'm in favor of going forward.
Okay, it passes four to one.
The mayor said aye instead of nay.
I meant no, I said no. So it passed four to one with me being in the dissent. Okay. We're going to number thirteen, I think we have discussed this a little bit. The reason I asked this to be put on is I am going to, to, at our next workshop, put a special, a special workshop, three-thirty workshop, so we just focus on the police facility and don't try to get this resolved when we have fifteen or eighteen other things to do. So Mandy, please be instructed that we will have a special workshop that will be earmarked only for the police facility before our next workshop.
On our next workshop?
Yes, on our-
And what day is that?
Prior to the next workshop.
No, on the same day.
The hours, the hours before the workshop.
Three-thirty to five-thirty, like we've done a few ago.
So that would be January the fifth at three-thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
And you want a special workshop just on the police department?
The goal and the challenge for council, we, we have all the options out there. Nothing's been taken off the table, all the options are out there. And to come up with a consensus and a direction for staff, it is, it is just simply time to try to make a decision. Very frustrating to have to deal with this, like month after month after month, it's, it's exhausting.
Is that when we would, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but is that when we would like Mr. Van Aken to come back to us with the listing agreement, or listing agreement and the CMA at that time?
He can do that at that time, yes.
I do, yes.
Yes, that would, that would be helpful, that would give us an idea, sure.
Still don't like the idea, by the way.
I know.
Actually, I would sit down on the regular workshop agenda if you're gonna call a special workshop just to discuss your options for the police facility. But if it's specific to the church property, I would recommend putting it on your regular agenda as a separate agenda item.
Okay, I agree.
Because you want to consider his listing agreement.
I agree.
Correct, okay, that works well.
No, just all in one, okay, whatever.
Okay, we go to number fourteen, liaison assignments. We have that, we have the list up there, Ms. Odom, of the liaison assignments. There's a list of the liaison assignments, here's your opportunity, if there's anything up there that you are interested in doing, any changes you would like to make. I do want to say that three months ago, I did bring it up, my interest in being on the TPO. My interest remains. My interest is not a challenge to anyone or the Vice Mayor, she's really into it, but I really feel that this position is of critical importance right now, especially with the roads and whatever's that's being discussed. As mayor, I have to have my arms around this, I have to know the people that are discussing these things. I, I have to have a in-depth, total knowledge of this and I have to be in on the inner circle to know these things. I feel as mayor, with the things that are going on with the roads, getting it peripherally or attending a meeting and sitting there and listening, it's, I'm just not getting the connection and the information. You're dealing with the entire commissioners in Marion County, you're getting to know them on a first-name basis. You're getting to know the mayors in certain cities on a first-name basis. It's a, it's a key position and I think it's one that the mayor should be. As far as my other appointments at tourist development council, I've enjoyed that. And I also am the liaison with the chamber of commerce, that's, that's been fun. But Vice Mayor, we had discussed this three months ago. And what you had said publicly is if we would hold off till December, you would appreciate it. I let it alone and now we're at, now we're at December.
And I appreciate that and I'll tell you back in three months ago when I was being mislabeled on that position and I was, I don't want to use the word attacked, but I was definitely being underappreciated for all of the work that I've ever done on that council, on that. And you'll remember, and, and I will tell you that this is not an ego thing for me, I, I don't need my, just like volunteering, this is a volunteering position that I do. I have been recognized by our fellow TPO members, even when I told them that I believe that you wanted to be, that there was, I didn't say you specifically, but that definitely that there was some discussion that, you know, I wouldn't be able to guarantee that I'd be there. They still voted me on as co-chairwoman to the transportation planning organization and they elected me to be a, on the metropolitan planning organization committee as well. And I, I understand one hundred percent how you want to, I think you said, know the players. Luckily for this council and for the citizens that I represent, please understand that I am on the TPO. Not only am I representing Dunellen, but I'm also representing that all county, all county residents and visitors that I do have a record, especially regarding this term hike that's coming, I mean, Mr. Lee bringing in that, that, you know, article from nineteen ninety-nine, before I was even married, before I even had Sydney, I was fighting this. And it was stopped back then. I have given to this organization, I've given to fighting, or I don't want to use the word fighting, but to understanding and to, I spent a year, what was it, a year and a half of my time for hours at the EMCOR meetings where I voiced the concerns of, of all of us. I remember seeing Mr. Martino there and he would tell me I did a good job. You know, so I, I think that taking us, taking me off at this time, and again, I don't need my ego stroke to be doing this. I need to be, I feel like I am a asset to this city, to the citizens, to the future of Dunellen, who involves my daughter, who involves my grandchildren hopefully one day, and four or five generations from now, to protect our river, our, our way of life. And I know that I, I have a good working relationship with those members of that TPO and I can go to those, like when I went to the, the EMCOR meetings, I knew people there that I had been on the TPO in the past and I knew them, they knew me. And I was able to work with them to get things, you know, to, to be a, a, a piece of the puzzle to try and stop things. So, you know, if this council really thinks that I can't do this job, that the mayor, for, because he's- that the mayor, because he's the mayor, I, I just think I'm, I'm a very good fit over there. I have a great working relationship with the staff at TPO and I'm always happy to, I mean, no offense to anybody, but I shared the TPO information, it's still back there and nobody ever looked at it. I had a big folder, the pamphlet's out there and not a single person looked at it, Mr. Mayor. So, and I know you're saying, oh, it's an important position and, and I need to be there to, to make sure the voice of Dunellen is heard. Well, sir, you can't get a much bigger mouth than me. And you, and look how I am with the, you give me that bone, I am not letting go of it.
Well, Vice Mayor, you, you, wait a second. You, you, we discussed this and you asked me at the time. I could have called a vote right then, but I didn't. You asked me at the time, you said, please, give me consideration. Let's wait till December. If you wait till December, I'll gladly step aside. That's what you said.
Yes, sir.
So now, now I have done that and now it's December and I'm going back to what you and I had discussed in public. If you leave us alone and now I'm, that's what I-
And it, and times have changed, sir. And I didn't promise, sir, are you gonna let the audience make noise, please? Are you gonna protect me?
Please, everyone, just listen to the discussion.
And I even, I, y'all do whatever, but I would take it for a vote.
Andrew, one question I have. I don't know if it's even clarified in our codes, how committee assignments are decided. Normally on boards that I've been on, the chair assigns committee assignments. In the legislature, the chair assigns. Is it addressed how a, an assignment is, is made on this council?
I'm not aware of any, and that's, that's actually probably a better question for the city clerk. I will tell you, I'm not aware of any, any codes or anything that do address that. And in the absence of anything specifically addresses it, the first thing to do is to look to custom and how it's been addressed in the past.
Can I make a comment?
Are you finished?
Yes.
My research and my conversation was with a senior attorney of Florida Ethics Commission. That senior attorney advised that because it is not a compensated position, that council has the right to take a vote and decide who fills the liaison positions.
Well, that's, I'm very willing to, to do that. I'm just asking if it has been addressed. Normally, I don't think there has been a contested liaison position, so possibly it hasn't ever been dealt with before.
Council is free to, you have, you know, looking to custom is the answer as to how would you proceed in the absence of taking a different direction. But council can certainly decide how they would like to deal with it procedurally, as long as there's not any sort of-
The rock, paper, scissors, shoot. The rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
All right, so I think the way to resolve this would be just take the council vote. All right.
Ms. Kenny wanted to say something, though.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
It's Ms. Kenny.
Yeah, Ms. Kenny?
Well, all I was gonna say is if we remember the last workshop, the number of people who came to that workshop concerned about the turnpike extension shows you that times do change. And my understanding is that when the agreement was made some months ago, that you were amenable to staying until December and then the mayor would take on that position. And, let me finish, please. And because of the severity of inconsequences of what could happen with this turnpike, I don't think that it's anything that is not congratulating you for your past work, but I think that mayor definitely, who does not have a full-time job, he is using his position full-time, needs to be front and center. That's just my thing.
I have never let my job interfere with this and I have put my job on hold for this.
No one said that. No, that was not, that was not said. It was said that this, that the mayor is, the only thing he's doing right now in terms of his position is he is a full-time mayor.
Full-time city councilwoman.
Okay, all right. I think the way, best way to do this in absence of anything-
Did Ms. Williams want to say anything?
Is just to, just to have a council vote. So everybody good with the council vote?
Good with that.
All right, so those that would like to have Vice Mayor Hancher to continue is-
There has to be a motion and then a second.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion for a vote? Or to determine who's gonna be the liaison for TPO? Have a motion?
Sure, I move the Vice Mayor Hancher be, y'all be representative for, and what-
Let's just have a vote for you or I, you know? Let's, just a motion, a motion to have a vote.
A second to motion.
Okay, who, who, Ms. Kenny, did you have a motion to vote?
Certainly. I will move that we vote for the position of who will represent the city of Dunellen for the position as liaison for the transportor, Transportation Planning Organization.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? No discussion? All right, we bring it to vote. All in favor of Vice Mayor Hancher?
Aye.
Okay. Favor of Mayor White?
Talking.
All right. Oh, public comment before we took the vote? Okay. Is there any public comment? Excuse us. Okay, we gotta do this again, correct? Vote? Andrew?
Can simply affirm the vote with no public comment?
Do we have a motion to affirm the vote?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Affirmed. Okay. Passed three to two. All right, is there anything else about the liaison positions that you would like to change, add to? One thing I've noticed on our history commission, we rarely have anybody go to our history council meetings. I do attend the planning-
Preservation?
Yes, do you go to them?
I go to those meetings.
Okay, so-
It was canceled last month.
Okay.
But there's no meeting that's-
So you're on that? So you can give us a report.
Do I go to those meetings?
All right. Is there anything else that anybody would like to do?
Yes.
I, I am doing the tourist council. I don't have to do that. It is a-
It's important.
It's a, yes, it is. I'm also the liaison with the Chamber of Commerce. That's three, three for me to do. I don't have to do three. If there's anyone else that would like to assume any of those, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you, you have to appoint a staff member for the Public Schools Facilities Planning Working Group.
That's correct.
And you have to approve the council member, which I see as-
For the school board. Okay. Mandy, you want to go over what that is?
Yes, it's just a working group that they requested. They're gearing up at the beginning of the year sometime next year. We don't have a schedule yet. But it's to go over the interlocal agreement for public school facilities. There's a lot of comprehensive plan. And some volunteers, and Georgina has volunteered to serve as the staff member on that working group. And Councilwoman Kovach had also expressed an interest in serving as the council member liaison to that group.
Okay, so you've already agreed to do it, correct, Georgina?
Yes.
As a staff member, Ms. Kovach? Is everybody okay with that? Anybody else want to do it? All right, so it looks like by consensus, you guys are in, right?
Thank you, sir.
All right, is there anything else on the liaison we need to discuss? Okay. We go to number 15, council liaison reports and comments. Ms. Kovach, do you have anything to add at this, at this time?
Not at this time. It was a, there was an election. Swift might appoint another member as treasurer and that's it. As far as other comments, I'm sorry, Mayor White, you said other comments. Do you mean go beyond this?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry?
We're done with this.
What was handed to you all by Mandy was a note sent to me. I got it right before this meeting. Before I dashed over here, I received it at 4:41 PM from Kathy Bryant. I had just sent her a short invitation, email, invitation to attend today's workshop. And as you can see, she responded with, "Thank you so much for your email invitation to attend today's workshop. Fortunately, I am unable to attend because I have to be at the meeting of the Marion County Hospital District." As far as the turnpike extension, at last week's BCC meeting, that means the Marion County-
County Commissioners.
Yes, thank you. I requested that our board send a letter to FDOT asking them to follow the recommendations of the EMCOR's Task Force.
Right, it's on for you.
Okay? And we know what that is. It will again be an agenda item at our December 21st meeting. If you are not there, not aware, we, Marion County Commissioners opposed the project in 218 and I did sit on the EMCOR's Task Force. So I think we know where we stand, but I still think we need to keep the discussion on the front burner because I do know that some of those county commissioners, they are representing commercialism and hardcore development around the city of Ocala. They definitely have marked off the boundaries on the farm preservation district. I mean, that is well-defined. However, we are not part of that. And once you get south of 40, that, that boundary line is not, includes southwest Marion County and the Dunellen region. So we, we need to keep this on the burner. In my previous experience with a similar issue, it was 30 years ago, is there is a separation in thoughts of development between our region and Ocala's commercial district industrial parks and, I shall say, high-density housing developments. Okay, so we need, we need to, definitely, I'll be going to the meeting on the 21st. I'm encouraging other persons also and trying to get the word out. We need to make a show. Ms. Kathy Bryant? Yes, definitely. I am not so certain about other person on the commission as far as their commitment to preserving and protecting southwest Marion County from that one branch that of the northern extension that would affect us. I know where they stand on the other branch, but-
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
Anything else? We're gonna discuss, yeah. Art Jones's comment on going to, back to Billy Woods. I don't know if it was Art. Were you aware that we did have a discussion early last year with Sheriff Billy Woods?
Yes, I heard about it.
Okay, and-
Even if he was prepared.
Right.
I don't know if you ever-
And the amount that he said it would cost the city of Dunellen. I stand correct, I probably am gonna be corrected. Was it 1.4 million? Is that correct? But I would also like to refer to a news article I found cruising around one night. This is what I do at night, cruise around, get information. I found an article in, came out of Riverland News, 2014, when Nathan Witt took over, God bless him, when nobody wanted to be mayor here because of the financial state of the city. We were in serious financial crisis and actually it took Governor Rick Scott to send funds to Dunellen, to pay our bills, to go on to the next month.
No.
Yes, no?
That did not happen.
That happened?
It did not.
I stand corrected then? Okay, this is what I read in Riverland News. But also that at that time, there was discussion about the police department and possibilities of having Marion County Sheriff's Department provide services, meaning to patrolmen on duty. And the sheriff at that time, who was Chris Blair, he came to city council workshop and he put a figure out, 450,000 to have two officers on duty, 450,000. Yeah, that was a few years ago. In fact, it was 11 years ago, I believe. But again, it depends who's gonna be sheriff's, who's gonna be the person who will have to go back to it sometime, perhaps with this discussion. I just wanted to make that statement. That is not off the board, as far as I'm concerned, about talking again to the Marion County Sheriff's Department about providing services. And we already, I already did the research about how well it has worked out for Inverness, Crystal River and Home Asses. And they have an office at their city halls where an, an officer reports every day and keeps in constant communication with city administration and council and it works for them. Special events, they add other officers to assist. That's all of my comment again on that. And I thank Art for bringing that up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kovach. Ms. Kenny, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay, I, I just have a couple. One is council through the workshop agreed to instruct staff to create a resolution stating our opposition to the turnpike extension. It's very important that we have this resolution prepared and ready to go before the 21st of December. On the 21st of December, Marion County has its commissioner, commission meeting. And on that agenda, I've been told, they will be discussing that. We need to have our resolution ready so they have it in hand. We also have January 11th date as the beginning of the legislative session. We cannot wait till our next meetings in January to have this resolution. We need to get this out before the Marion meeting and certainly before, timely and for, before the legislative session. So I've talked with Mandy. She says that we do have the requirement of notice for a resolution. And she said to me that time-wise, it does work out if we have a special council meeting, probably lasts 15 minutes, on the 20th to get this resolution passed so we have it in a timely manner in front of the commissioner meeting and for sure in front of the legislature. Correct, Mandy?
Correct.
20th?
We did come up with a proposed letter that you could send the county in lieu of a resolution if you, if you chose not to hold a special council meeting so that you could pass a resolution. I provided you with that, but we don't have a draft resolution at this time.
Right, well, I would like to call a special council meeting on the 21st.
On the 21st or the 20th?
20th.
20th, 20th. It's very important.
I'm putting it on my calendar.
Can you hold on a minute? I'm confused because Marion County Board of Commissioners meetings, meeting is 9:00 AM on the 21st, so shouldn't we have the resolution drafted and sent out prior to that?
On the 20th, which is Monday, correct?
Yes.
And their meeting's Tuesday.
You can always have a meeting at 9:00 AM.
What time? No, so-
Their, their meeting's on Tuesday. What he's proposing is have a special council meeting on Monday prior to their meeting.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying have it at nine-
What time's good for everybody?
Having it at 9:00 AM.
Having it 9:00 AM. That way you can get it there by the end of the afternoon.
The time is good.
Okay, 9:00? 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM on the 20th. As long as it's the time of 20th. I agree.
Okay. Everybody seems to want it early, 9:00 AM.
Maybe on the 20th.
Okay.
9:00 AM. Okay.
Very good. Question for you, Jan, our CRA. The, Jim Coolyard was here. The county is now very much into trying to put together a weather shelter at the park. They were very receptive and responded to the Den Allen Little League when there was at least some matching money that really motivated. I really picked up on something there. And when someone else comes up with a little extra money, they seize on it. Would it be possible for us to consider giving some of our CRA money to the county to, doesn't have to be a lot, just whatever we can do, if we have any, to try to entice them to go forward with the weather shelter?
We'd have to do some research to see what's available because all the CRA funds as of this budget are appropriated.
Can you give us a report at the next workshop?
Sure.
Okay. That's just a consideration. Little report. I did do some traveling this week. I did go all the way up to Chiflin and attended the FDOT meeting on the turnpike extension up there. It was not actually a meeting. It's where you just went up there and met the representatives that answered questions. There was at least 500 people that showed up there on that occasion. Two days later, in Hernando, they had the same thing in Hernando. Surprisingly, less than half that number of people showed up in Hernando. Here again, the FDOT has no plans to have a, like we did, a public discussion for nearly a year. They are just simply going to move in increments based on submissions by handwritten notes, emails, and whatever. That's why what we did was so well-attended. People that are keen about this subject, they have nowhere to voice their opinion, and the FDOT doesn't have it for nearly a year. Surprisingly, the first public meeting where you have to talk is within 60 days of the recommendations to be given to the governor. So at that point, it, so I went to that, and I went to Chiflin, and I went to La Canto. Then Friday, I also went to Citrus County where they had their legislative delegation meeting where Art had talked about Representative Muso and Missulu and our senator from that area. And they just simply sat at a dais like this, and the entire audience would take turns making comments. And I was quite surprised. They had no time limit or whatever, and you could talk to them about anything you want. What was quite amazing to me, this was a day or two after our workshop where we had people lining up wall-to-wall to speak, even though that room was, must have had, what would you say, about 100 people in it, Art? Yeah, about 100, you know? I was the only person that spoke to the turnpike. So it was quite a surprise to me that on this side of the river, it seems to be really something people are keen about. On that side of the river, they don't seem to be that engaged. So where I'm looking at it, if we have two routes coming this way and two routes going that way, and Marion County's heavily engaged in opposition, and Citrus County is either ambivalent to it or thinking that possibly it would increase their economy and they might be for it, that would, that would be significant. So there was two things I noticed. One, the La Canto meeting had less than half the people that we had up in Chiflin, and there was absolutely not a single person that had the senate president, a key person who's going to decide this, sitting there, and a representative who has moved up the chain in the legislature, and no one brought it up except me. And I talked with Representative Missulu afterwards, and he seemed to think that Citrus County was actually leaning in favor--
They were. The EMCOR meeting, they were.
Yeah, so--
Because they have an industrial area that they're trying to--
So that's really interesting. A big part of what FDOT will do is analyze the resistance. They'll be analyzing a lot of information, but the area that is organized and resists the most compared to another area that says, hey, we think it's a good idea, we like it, you're really going to increase your chances of receiving it. So I looked at that very interesting. Just have a couple photos for you. Mandy, I sent you the photos. An update on the tunnel under 41. I dropped by there this morning. If, that's the first thing that comes up. There it is. The sod is down, and actually while I was out there, they were watering it. It's absolutely unbelievably beautiful. There's the Sunoco Station in the background. That's it going underneath. That's what it looks like you have. It's not even asphalt. It's concrete, and that's rock for drainage underneath. It has lights inside of it. It's another picture inside. That's it as you're in the tunnel. By the way, it said, "Keep out." So I broke the law. Chief, they didn't catch me.
And I saw two cyclists going through here.
So go back to that last one, Mandy. That was a photo, the last photo you had. That's a photo in the tunnel looking toward the park. So you're actually seeing where it's going, it's a park. Okay, Mandy? That's an interesting one. That's from, that road right there on the bottom is the road that leads you into the trailhead. And on the other side of the fence is where the trail is that is coming up the hill and it's eventually going into our trail in Blue Run Park. That's one of the reasons I was asking Mr. Coolyard about the future plans for Blue Run Park, is this is getting ready to happen, and this is really going to be something special. So with the tuber takeout and the current use of the park for its passive use, what are the plans to deal with this? It's a good problem to have, but I didn't get a date when this would open, but when the sod's down and they're watering the sod, it can't be too far off. Okay, Mandy?
That's it.
Okay. And then I have a couple other pictures on another subject. I can't even, can't even remember what-- Yeah, they're, oh, these are just for history's sake. For those of you that were not at the workshop where everybody spoke out against the turnpike, there's a picture before the meeting. You can't really, it looks like someone with a red outfit is blocking the view, but that lobby is just loaded with people and it flowed into the parking lot. And when I asked the people, I said, "I know everyone's not going to be able to speak or wishes to speak. Raise your hand if you're for it." Not a single hand. I said, "Raise your hand if you're here for information." Not a single hand. And I said, "Raise your hand if you're opposition." It was 100%. And so that's what was curious to me. Then when I go to Citrus County, no one seems to be concerned about it. It was quite amazing. And I have one more. Mandy, or don't I? Maybe not?
Yes.
That's it?
You said we have to.
Oh, and this is just for those of you that didn't see it on Friday on the front page of the Ocala Star banner. We made the headlines, Den Allen in opposition with pictures and quotes. So we are showing leadership on this, and I'm sure the state is aware, certainly the county is. Really proud of this council for getting in front of us, and that's why I think it's important.
That's why I invited Mr. Ballms over here.
It was good, to have this resolution ready before everything gets going. And with that, council, my, that's my--
I would like to make a comment, please, on the letter. I love the idea of the letter. It's got a lot of stuff in it that needs more bite to it. And one of the things I would suggest is just one, maybe two, three sentence paragraph, taking note of not just the fact that--
Well, let me, I can help you here. The letter is in lieu if we didn't want to have a resolution to a special meeting. So this was, if everybody says, "Let's not have a special meeting," we could have done the letter.
Okay.
So the letter--
That just goes away now.
The letter goes away with the resolution.
The only thing I was going to say is we needed a paragraph explaining not just the impact of having the turnpike after it was completed, but the devastation that construction caused.
Yeah. We're not going to do it.
Okay. All right, and we can hopefully put those thoughts in the resolution.
Yes, if anybody has any comments or thoughts that you would like included in the draft, we'll bring to you on the 20th. Just email it. You can email me, I can include them in there.
Okay.
And then you can talk about it on the 20th.
Didn't we do a resolution the first time when I was on the EMCORs? Can we, can you send us that again, please?
I just, actually, you all have that. I had a public records request by a council member--
Oh, that was--
Couple weeks ago. And I provided all the information that we had, that we had ever processed, like resolutions, whatever.
Okay, yeah, then I have it in my file.
Anything having to do with the turnpike or crystal connector, I sent all those documents--
Okay, then I still got it.
So Andrew, to ask you, you'll be certainly a big part of putting the resolution together. Can you have it done for us by the 20th? It would almost be a copy of the EMCORs one, to a certain point.
I'm not quite sure what, well, if council wants me to draft it, I believe the plan was for staff to create it pursuant to your, the council's wishes.
Mandy, want to chime in on this? Who is going to be the main responsible for the drafting of the--
We can put it out and send it to Andrew for his review, and he always does. Yeah, yeah, we'll do the best we can, and then Andrew will perfect it.
I don't, I don't want to show up here on the 20th and everybody look at each other. I thought you were going to do it. I thought you were going to do it. I'm, believe me, I'm learning to check and double-check on everything. Department head reports?
I have reports, but--
Okay, I only have one thing before I forget. I wanted to remind council that Thursday, we're doing the official tree lighting at 5:30.
Thursday?
Between 5:30 and 6:00. Councilwoman Williams has gathered some members of her church to come and sing and have some--
Community, not just from the church.
Oh, it's not from the church, from the community? Okay.
From other churches, too.
And we'll have some cookies. It'll just be a short ceremony. We're trying, we're doing it in conjunction with the event at the depot because their event begins, I think it's 6:30, and they're doing a holiday cookie exchange and holiday party. So we thought we would tie that together and have the lighting of the tree and then everybody move over there to their holiday party.
I was asked to, if I could assist bringing some amplifications. Is that still needed?
Bringing--
Like some speakers or microphones? My son, you know, has all that equipment. I was asked if we could bring something. Do you need, do you need that?
I think the chamber was going to do that. If you're, are you talking about for the tree lighting?
Yes.
I'll have to confirm with Julie, but I have not spoken with anybody about that specifically.
Well, if you think we need it, let me know.
Okay.
It wouldn't be no trouble to bring it over and set it up for a while.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Odom?
I don't have anything else.
Come on.
I--
Jan?
I will about 3 o'clock in the morning. That's a little crazy. Do you see a couple of strangers walking around the building or others? Tomorrow, starting tomorrow, for just a couple of days, and they'll probably be back actually.
Okay, that's good. George, Anna?
Okay. Well, I just wanted to provide a briefing, an update for the Santa at the park. The other day, I wanted to first of all thank the members of council for being there and supporting. The members of the Chamber of Commerce who were kind enough to come out and bring cookies and all kinds of goodies. The members of our awesome volunteer group and other local citizens that came out. Mr. Patrick Shepard for bringing those inflatables. Ms. Julie Mancini, she brought a couple of things for decorative purposes. Mr. Greg Mackler for bringing Santa. And our local restaurants, Latin family restaurants, Wheaties, they both contributed food for the audience. And of course, our wonderful city employees who helped me a lot. We prepared a great presentation and had a small but very special group within the audience, including a very special guest, Troy's little grand niece, nephew. God bless. The park looked amazing. This is just the beginning to wonderful years to come. We plan to incorporate the Santa at the park for our next year's lighting ceremony, and hopefully we can do it at the very beginning of December so that we don't have any kind of conflicts going forward. We also anticipate presenting a budget to council for approval for the upcoming budget year, as we didn't account for this funds for this one. And most of the staff and council came up with their own funds to back this project. So we're going to try to do that for next year.
And I will let you know, I reached out to a dentist, one of the dentists here in town, and they would have donated like toothbrushes and toothpaste. And the one girl I talked to forgot to get it to me. So she said she will definitely, if we ever have anything else like that, they will definitely do it. Suck her cochi, kashi. Anyway, they would have helped. So we'll have, we'll have it all in place for next year in advance, okay?
Absolutely. That's awesome. Thank you.
And a couple of the group that was singing, they volunteered themselves to--
A lot of them were from Den Allen, who has the change.
I also, I also, she told me, volunteered themselves to come help us sing on Thursday at the tree.
Wonderful singers there.
I know two of them did.
Okay, George, Anna, what else?
And, well, I, as part of the community development report for November, we had 13 building permits. Six were commercial, seven were residential, 16 plan reviews in total, and 94 total inspections. 18 permits were processed. One new business came into town. It's called 24 Hour Workout, and they are at North William Street. And we had a total of fees collected in the amount of $5,507. And one of the council members requested for me to bring up the Florida Pedaling Trail. And just to answer one of the questions that our member had, Ms. Dorsey provided some information about the paddling trail and how it's going to help market resources to outdoor recreational enthusiasts. And she mentioned that, for example, the Janky Town, they acquired this designation at one point, and they've increased their kayaking events and festivals greatly. Their participation is strongest, and they, they've even increased the local hotels, you know, transit, visitors coming into town. The restaurants have improved their revenues, and they even fundraised at different events for the benefit of the community. So it's a great, it's a great designation that we would be getting. And right now, we are in the process of reviewing the memorandum for the designation. We've passed it on to our legal team, and we're going to be in conversations with Mandy to make sure that it's what we need for the benefit of the city. of the city. Once we have that, we can bring it to your attention for approval, and then we can pay the fees necessary to get the membership rolling and, and all the other prerequisites that go with that. But it's in process, just so you all know. And that will be all for me.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Troy?
Surprisingly, nothing. Good. I've given you all my updates last meeting, and I have nothing new since then.
And the one that's got us excited is the Cedar Street, the 2 Streets, Cedar Street, and.
You guys voted on ordering the bid, so in that time, I get notification, and then when I have a set date for the free construction meeting, I'll let council know.
So we might have, we might have something to talk about in January?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
All right, Andrew.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all of you, staff, and the citizens of Denon.
Amen, and back to you.
All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Merry Christmas, everybody. God bless.
All right.
Goodbye.
Thank you, everyone.